Public Safety Emergency Management Committee to order at 6:45. I have two motions this evening. From the docket of March 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to appropriate 150,000 from account undesigned fund balance free cash general government to account fire overtime in order to maintain services for the remainder of fiscal year 25.
Thank you. The fire department has experienced a significant increase in injured on duty claims in fiscal year 25. The tenure average is approximately 6,814 per year, but we've already accrued 5,477 hours. So it's almost 2,000 hours over what we usually get. So that's why these funds are being requested right now. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of March 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to raise the expenditure limit on the ambulance revolving fund, fund number 2610, to $1,800,000 to cover current and future expenditures associated with providing EMS services. Thank you. That's quite a number. So in fiscal year 14, the fire department responded to 4,386 EMS incidents, and in fiscal year 24, they responded to 7,277 incidents. So it's an increase of almost 66% in 10 years. So the call volume has a lot, an effect on a lot of things, such as the life expectancy of the ambulances, the repair costs, maintenance costs, supplies. So it's quite a number, but that's what's required right now. Any other comments or questions? Yes?
Thank you. Of course, definitely have to take care of the public safety. Do we know the revenue increase from the ambulances with the call volume increase?
I, the, I can look into that if you would want me to for next week. So the revenue increase versus the call increase?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it really, I guess, doesn't sway my opinion on the vote any which way, but I, I guess I'm just more curious about it.
I do think that there was something in the backup information, but I can certainly get that for next week. So do you want to vote it out?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I would vote it out.
Yeah, 100%.
All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I will call for adjournment.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn at 6:48.
I'd like to call this meeting in the municipal council to order 6:48. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, just for those at home, we've received some questions about nights like this where we start a little bit earlier than seven o'clock. It is always on the docket. The reason that we do start this early is when we have a committee meeting or something, instead of waiting until seven, we just roll right into it to be cognizant, especially tonight, where we have three public hearings and our guests. So that being said, we do have three public hearings. And Madam Clerk, I would ask you to read the notice of the first one, please.
Certainly. Public hearing for the following loan order. Ordered that the order of the city council passed May 7th, 2024, authorizing $35,181 for the permanent PFAS facility to be located at the Wading River Plant 250 Balcom Street, Mansfield, Massachusetts, is hereby amended to read as follows. Ordered that $50 million is appropriated for the purpose of financing the construction and the construction administration for the permanent PFAS facility to be located at Wading River Plant 250 Balcom Street, Mansfield, Massachusetts, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the general laws. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow an amount not to exceed $50 million under Section 8(4) of Chapter 44 of the general laws, Chapter 29(c) of the general laws, or any other enabling authority that such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the city, that the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that the mayor is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get going, just a couple of reminders. As water is a hot topic issue right now across the city, I'm going to ask that all questions from the council pertain to the topics, topics at hand, as well as comments from the speakers that they're in regards to what's in front of us. Just a friendly reminder for the council that public hearings are for clarifying questions. We won't be arguing the merits of any of these measures on the floor. That being said, do we have anyone to speak in favor? Don't be shy.
My name is Matthew Barry. I'm a project engineer with Tater &amp; Howard.
Matt, can we just have your address for the record, please?
Sure. 33 Temi Road, Hollison, Mass. We are the water consultant for the city of Attleboro. We've been working with the city for about a little over 10 years now. This project has started back in about 2021 with a pilot study that has carried through to a design of the permanent water treatment plant. And back in August of 2023, we put together an estimate that was submitted to the SRF program for funding through the state for this treatment plant, which was approximately That, or this project was approved through the state for funding through SRF. Since then, Tater &amp; Howard has completed the design. The project is actually out to bid now. But in a meeting back in October, we had a 95% design put together, at which point that estimate had gone to approximately $39 million or so. So that included the cost of the treatment plant, construction administration, resident onsite representation, as well as contingencies, essentially the whole entire project. At that time, we had provisions to come back to council to talk about that increase from 35 to 39 million. We then got into the new year, at which point we heard back from Mass DEP that BABA requirements would be required for this project, which is build a, buy American, build American. Those requirements are new to, it's new to the state, it's new to Tater &amp; Howard. Those requirements do have cost implications because that essentially requires that all the materials be sourced in the United States, or a large portion thereof. So initially, we had thought that that cost would be an overall 25% increase, which was quite a large sum of money. Once we had some more time to digest that, we looked into all the various costs and broke out about $11 million of the total project would be affected by BABA requirements. So that 25% essentially applied to the 11 million. So add that to your 39 million, we are somewhere in the range of what we thought will be about 42 and a half million dollars, approximately what we think total project cost would be. So at that point, we had a meeting with our project team, Tater &amp; Howard, the city of Attleboro. We had the mayor's office involved. Laura was there, we had Deb, Matt Karoti with the water department, and collectively we decided that rather than trying to work with something in the, in the neighborhood of 45 million, we wanted to give ourselves just that cushion up to 50 million, not to exceed a 50 million, to cover those costs.
Do we have any questions for the speaker? Mr. Cobus?
Can you talk a little bit about the pilot program and the, and sort of the issues we had initially with the manganese and talk about the, sort of the, what I understand to be success now and the manganese levels being down and sort of the confidence in the, the new proposed design and its effectiveness and, and overall design?
So, Councilor Cobus, if I may, we've already had those discussions. This public hearing is about the funding and the increase.
Okay.
If you'd like to K D a question to the increase?
Never mind.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Lavoy?
Thank you. Could you just touch on the gap between the 42 and a half projection to the 50 million not to exceed? Does that basically gets a bit larger than 10%? Does that just kind of like added costs that could arise, or?
So that was basically where we had talked about coming back to council, say, for up to 45 million. That was basically just a group decision amongst the mayor's office, the city treasurer, Tater &amp; Howard, where we had just decided, rather than trying to compress that 42 and a half within the 45, just to give us that extra cushion up to 50 million. We're not anticipating to spend that. I believe Laura's words were to rescind, is that the correct word? Rescind that, any of those extra funds that wouldn't be used. So the key there is not to exceed. Whatever the bid comes in at, we already have a known cost for all the construction administration, the field representation. Once the bids come in, essentially the state requires you to only carry a 5% contingency. So we'll have a very narrowed down cost probably by mid-April when the bids come in for what, what we're looking at for total project costs.
Thank you. Vice President Dolan?
Thank you. And, and I think Laura, maybe Laura can answer this better, but I believe when our auditor was here, she said, if we, if we came in at 46 million, if we approved 45 million and we came in at 46 million, we would have to start the process all over again, excuse me, which would put us back in time. So that's my understanding, that we stretch it to 50 million, probably won't use it all, but it's just like a safety net.
And the, the biggest thing with that is if, for some reason, let's say, for that example, that we went with the 45, we needed 46, we had to come back to council. Part of this program has what's called principal forgiveness, where if we can award this contract and sign the agreements by June 30th, the city gets X amount of dollars back to the total principal of this project, which right now I believe stands at 6 and, 6.6%, which over that, that total cost averages out to somewhere around 3.3 million. So that alone is reason to make sure that we have all these i's dotted and t's crossed to make sure that the funding's in place and we can award this contract to a contractor before June 30th.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Barry, thanks for coming down. A question I have for you is what impact in your estimation could ongoing supply chain, supply chain issues, inflation, and even tariffs have on this project and, and the price here?
A lot of these, a lot of the equipment and a lot of the supplies that we use for this, we've already vetted those pretty well prior to the design. A lot of the building products, the concrete, a lot of that's local. I think there may be some uncertainty with, with some of the products that we know have long lead times. This is a two-year project, so hopefully with that in mind, over the course of two years, getting ahead of the game, once the contract is awarded, getting on top of the submittals, getting the ball moving on the equipment can sort of help with those lead times. As far as the tariffs go, I don't think I have a good answer for you on that. Hopefully with the fact that this is BABA and it's all, you know, for the most part made in the USA, that that should help us a lot.
Yeah, and I think even with the loan forgiveness, so should hopefully help. Okay. Additional questions or comments? Mr. Barry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else speak in favor?
Good evening. My name's Laura Gignak. I'm the Attleboro City Treasurer. I reside at 33 Jesse Ave in South Attleboro, Massachusetts. And I came up here today to talk a little bit about SRF funding because I believe that you may want to know a little bit more about what that means. So we applied for SRF's funding, which is state revolving funds for the PFAS permanent facility at Wading River. These are funded through annual grants from the EPA and state matching funds. This funding is through Massachusetts Clean Water Trust and DEP, which assisted communities in complying with the Clean Water and Safe Drinking Water Acts. We have been approved for $35,181,000, which as Matt had talked about, originally we thought that the BABA was 25% of that $35,181,000, which would equate to about $8.7 million, which now we have clarified that it's actually 25% on 11 million, so that's $2.7 million. So obviously that's a much better situation to be in. While we're expending the funds, there's a drawdown period and once, during construction, there's 0% on that loan. So we're not paying any interest on that during construction. Once the drawdown's at 50%, that's when we have to look at permanent financing. The permanent financing for 20 years currently is at 2%. If we go 30 years, it's at 2.4%. However, with that being said, once it gets closer to that loan term, if we reach all these milestones or hurdles per se that they want to make sure that we, these are PFAS, we could come out with 0%. So there's a significant difference of going through SRF than going through the bond market, which the average coupon is 4%. So, and I'll give you the math, you'll see where there's a difference here. As Matt said, if we do not have a vote before June 30th of vote in a bid, we will lose our loan forgiveness, which is 6.6%, which is 3.3 million. So that is significant as well. Matt also touched upon the fact that this is a do not exceed authorization. So if we do not use up to that $50 million, when that project is complete, we're going to rescind that extra money. We're not going to spend it, we're just going to do a rescind like we've done in the past on many other loan authorizations. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know that, you know, 35 to 50 million, again, water is a hot topic, but there are reasons why we're asking for this. And, and the requirement is BABA, we can't get around it, it just is what it is at this point for this loan. So I ran a couple different bond schedules through our financial advisor. I ran one on just the open market, which is a general obligation bond at 4% on 50 million because there's no loan forgiveness. Let's just go worst case scenario. So the total interest on that is $23,579,200. I also ran with SRF with the 6.6 loan forgiveness, and I rounded it out to $47 million, just for simplicity sake, at 2%. The total interest on that would be $10,486,900. So if you were to take the difference between those two, we are saving $13,92,300 in interest expense. Obviously, you add in the $2,750,000, which is BABA. It's significant, there's, you can't put a candle to what we could do on the open market for this SRF loan. I also ran a scenario for 30 years, general obligation on the open market at 4% on $50 million, worst case scenario. The total interest over 30 years would be 36- The total interest over 30 years would be $36,742,600. And I ran the same one again, SRF with the 6.6% loan forgiveness at 3.3 million, at 2.4% on 47 million. And the total interest would be $19,473,360. So the interest savings on 30 years to go with SRF to the open market would be $17,269,240. And as you can see, that BABA requirement of that $2,750,000 is a minor thing against the amount of interest that we would save on that loan. So I wanted to come here and kind of explain what SRF was, why we think it's important to do it. Obviously, the numbers speak for themselves, but I think maybe that needed to be kind of explained a little bit. We haven't done SRF financing probably for 20 some odd years. It was before my time, but it makes sense to do it now. So that's all I have to say.
Do we have any questions, Vice President Dolan?
Thank you. Why haven't we done SRF funding in so long? It seems to make sense to me.
It does, but it's not always good for the projects that we're looking at. So our financial advisor will look at all avenues and say, you know, this is what this funding is. This is a PFAS project, so, and there's a lot of, obviously PFAS is a big topic, so they're favorable towards that. Not all the other water main projects or all of that would qualify for SRF funding. So when we talk about financing as a finance team, and there's multiple people on the finance team, we talk about different scenarios, how long. We also need to figure out how this is going to fit into the budget. I mean, whether we go 20 or 30 years, sure, there's significant, you know, savings in 20, but the budget might not be able to handle it. So there's a lot of conversations that we have with our financial advisor, with the finance team, to kind of lay out what would be the best case scenario, the best thing for the city of Attleboro, the most savings that we could possibly find because that's ultimately the goal, correct? And also to make sure the budget can handle it.
Thanks.
Mr. Tavares and Ms. Fola?
So just a question, Laura. I may have missed this in your explanation of the SRF funding, but I think you mentioned permanent financing was possible at between 2% to 2.4% depending on the term of the loan. I think you said something about being able to get it to 0%.
Correct.
Can you touch on that? I might have missed something there.
No, that's okay. So generally what happens is we do short-term financing before we do long-term financing. So let me preface that. So we are approved right now for $15 million, which is kind of the first tranche, right? At 2% with that 6.6% loan forgiveness on the overall balance, okay? But we do the short-term financing because we don't want to pay the long-term price for short-term. So we'll do small tranches, short-term, which then roll into the long-term 20, 30 years, depending on what we decide to do. So it's kind of the same way we do financing for any other project. We only pay short-term, so there's principal and interest on long-term. There's only interest due on short-term, which is also favorable for the budget. So that 0% will be determined when we go to long-term finance. And that's based on the hurdles that the SRF has for us to make sure that we've reached all these milestones. And honestly, I don't know what those exactly are. They didn't go into all the detail, but I did speak with Ray from the SRF, the Mass Clean Water. And he said there's certain hurdles that we look for before we determine whether it's going to be 2% or 0%. So worst case scenario, 2% for 20 years, 2.4% for 30 years. Is that?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Council Fola, then Council Lavoy.
Thank you, President Delisio. If I understood you correctly, we don't have to make a decision about what kind of loan to make, take, or pay back until we've drawn down half of the...
So there's certain guidelines that we do have to follow, but obviously going through SRF is way better than going out into the private market. So we don't know that until it comes to the closing, whether we're going to be 2% or 0%. We don't know the answer to that. I went worst case scenario.
I understood that, but there was something about making a decision when you are 50, have drawn down 50% of the borrowed funds. And my question really is, is that going to be a steady drawdown or do you draw down more in the beginning of the project? You said this, somebody said it was a two-year project. Should we expect after a year that the decision is going to be made how to pay it back or...
So it comes in $15 million tranches per year, so I want to kind of preface that as well because it's going to be short-term. It's 0% during construction. So when you draw down your 50%, that $15 million, it's going to be over several years. We're going to take that short-term and go longer-term at that point, and then we'll figure out if it's 20 or 30. The Mass Clean Water Trust will then decide if we've reached those hurdles, whether it's 0% or 2%. And that's all I really can answer because we're kind of in the process. When I asked them about that, they said it really just depends. So I'm giving you the worst case scenario possible.
I'm just going to try one more time. My question really has to do with the timing of when we will be 50, have drawn down 50% of the loan.
I really don't know the timing on that because I think it just depends on the project itself. I couldn't give you a six-month or a one-year timeline. As you know, there might be delays in supplies, so I really couldn't give you a timeframe on that, to be honest with you. I may know more as we move along, and I'd be more than happy to come back and give you an update on that, but I really couldn't give you a definitive answer on that right now.
Council Lavoy?
Thank you, President Delisio. Laura, thank you for being down here and for your hard work on this. Do you know for SRF funding, do we have the capability to pay down the principal balance? Should we ever receive anything from the class action lawsuits?
Generally, when we go long-term, you cannot do that. So it's for the amount of time that you have. It's principal and interest. Generally, your principal is one time a year and your interest is two times per year, usually six months apart. During the short-term, it's just interest only. If it's 0%, clearly there's nothing due. So, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Treasurer Gignak, for your hard work on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else speak in favor?
Evening, Council. Acting Superintendent of Attleboro Water, Matt Karoti. I think a lot's been covered by Matt Barry and Laura. I don't really have a lot to add. I think Matt covered the project pretty well and Laura covered the loan in detail. I just wanted to speak a little bit to Laura. The Vice President asked a good question, as much as also other councilors, about the loan amount. And I think I just wanted to speak to the portion of the importance of the timing of it due to the loan forgiveness, that the timing of having to come back to council for additional money if we went for the 40 or the 45. I just wanted to reiterate that the timing for that forgiveness, based on having what's already been discussed as that buffer to the 50 million. And I just also wanted to make it clear, I know it's pretty clear with the council, but with residents and everybody else, that this isn't a $50 million project as it stands now. It's a do not exceed number. So I just wanted to make that clear and touch on those points on the timing of everything.
Any questions for the Acting Superintendent, Council Soya?
Hi. I think it may be, this may go to Laura or someone else, but Counsel Lavoy had mentioned the class action suit, and if we do get money from that, how does that play into our budgeting for this project?
We probably shouldn't be talking about any lawsuit ongoing at this point. I don't think it'd be prudent.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speak in favor?
Good evening. I actually had no intention of stopping, but I was listening to the meeting, and I just wanted to share that Vice President Dolan is correct.
We just have your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deb Cool, city auditor. I was upstairs listening in. Yes. Vice President Dolan was correct. When I was here previously with Acting Superintendent Karoti, one of the things that I shared relative to the $50 million and my concern is, by the city's charter, I'm limited. I have to wait 30 days after a loan authorization is approved for me to sign a contract. So the date that everybody's been impressing upon, all of you, of the June 30th and the importance of getting into contracts previous to that date with the eventual vendor that is successful as the bidder, if we didn't have enough money in place, I legally can't sign the contract with the bidder. So the award can't be. And in starting this process again, as I'm sure you all appreciate with your public hearing and the notification to the newspapers and all of the things that happened, the concern really, in my eyes, was if we don't have sufficient funds, there's no place to go. It's such an extraordinary amount of money. So that was really the deciding factor for me in that group to weigh in on the difference between 45 and 50, knowing that there are, I didn't know about tariffs at the time, so I know there was a question on tariffs, right? I don't know how that's going to play into it. But the timing of everything is so important, and the potential for relief from the SRF fund is substantial enough to say, you know, the risk of a higher amount at the beginning is worthwhile, knowing that we can rescind. And we regularly rescind authorized unissued debt. So that gives me some comfort. Obviously, if the bids come in way out of, you know, if they came in ridiculously high and they're on a comparative basis, you're going to go with the lowest bidder, right? They have to, the lowest responsive bidder. So that gives me some solace as well. None of us wanted to be sitting in a room saying, you know, go high, but we thought it was really fundamentally the appropriate action to take at this time, given timing. I have been around for SRF funding. The treasurer and I have talked multiple times, and I know that we'll have follow-up meetings with the financial advisor. Sometimes it's just market conditions that drive it. One of the reasons that Treasurer Sandbach at one time left looking at funding in that regard was the open market. The conditions in the open market were so favorable for the open market. You would go, you could meet or beat 2% or, you know, 2.5% with admin fees on the open market. We're not in that market condition right now. So Laura's due diligence as it relates to the SRF and all of the numbers that she's run is really why we're very concerned about the June 30th date, at least in my world. So I hope that answers some clarification for folks, but I don't really have anything because I was just wondering. Bye. I thought I'd share.
Questions for the city auditor? Deb, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak against? Do we have anyone to speak neither for nor against? Seeing none, Vice President Dolan, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
I declare that public hearing closed. Madam Clerk, will you go on to a reading of the second public hearing, please?
Certainly. Continued public hearing regarding the requested amendments to Section 16-10 through 16-14 of the revised ordinances, water, assessments, rates, connections, and use. Proposal available at council office?
Do we have anyone speak in favor? I don't need to give your name again, you were just...
So this was for the connection fees, and I just wanted to touch on a few things that I felt were important regarding this topic. So evaluating fees for a lot of the paperwork you have in front of you was done by previous management as well as Mason, who has been unreachable. I wanted to thank the council for giving me the additional time to review all this material so that I could come here tonight and speak on this. One of the things that's also important to mention in these current fees to the proposed fees are what was implemented here or potentially implemented, looking to be implemented, was try to stay away from repairs or new service lines with homeowners, where this was more of a new construction, fees that would be affected and not fall on the homeowner had they had a service line leak or something like that. Any repairs or replacement of a water service line to your residence, the fee, you'll notice, stayed the same. As with other things, but staying on topic, when things aren't addressed over a period of time, they can fall behind significantly. And I think that's what's happened with this case. I think, as you see with other communities, cities and towns, we were way behind on a lot of these fees. And when it comes into question whether you're even covering the costs of the staff and whether it involves overtime or having employees out on these sites, when you're not even covering the costs of the overtime or the work incorporated within, as it becomes a problem. So I think what you'll see here on some of these proposals are us staying in line with surrounding areas and what they've been doing, where this isn't something we want to be revisiting on a yearly basis, but you also don't want to be making yourself, you know, not business friendly, so to speak. So I think we found a good balance, looking at this, of being able to cover costs as well as being in line with what other communities are doing. And I think that's pretty much all I have on this, but I'm strongly in favor of us moving forward because I think it's long overdue, and I think it gets us caught up, like I've already said, with surrounding, what surrounding communities are doing and covering those costs, so.
Before I open it up, Acting Superintendent, do you have, so I was glad to hear you talk about surrounding areas because that was a question I had. I appreciate you talking about being business friendly because I think that's always an area we need to look at. Can you talk about even a ballpark kind of overarching sentiment of where we are currently, current state, as relating to other municipalities surrounding us? Because I know a lot of our contractors developers, they do work not just in Attleboro but outside.
Right. And I think some of that, you know, you can see here, and I think when you're talking on certain fees where, you know, we're at $1,200 and other communities are at $4,000 to $5,000, I think, as I mentioned, this puts us in a place where we're not, you know, overshooting things and we're not trying to get caught up overnight, but it puts us in a place where we're right in line. But, and I look at it where, to me, I understand certain people might look at some of these increases and say, you know, you're coming up a good amount, but the way I look at it is, you know, people that have been doing business as far as some of these procedures go have been getting a break for a long time, and this could have been addressed a while back. So I think this puts us right where we need to be, and it puts us in a position where we're not going to have to have this conversation next year or any time immediately soon. It gets us caught up, but we're not overshooting, in my opinion.
Still makes us competitive, is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Vice President Dolan?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Matt. And I agree with you that it puts us in line. We won't have to revisit this every single year. And, you know, we did try to pass some of these a couple of years ago, and I think we got a couple little ones passed, but I don't think these fees are unreasonable. And for the public to understand, these aren't your water rates that we're discussing. And also, you also, you have to pay out of your, well, excuse me, not your pocket, water when you have police details and then you get called out. Like I know there's some higher fees if you get called out in the middle of the night, et cetera, because you're paying overtime and if you do need police details. So I think it's important that we be in line and stay in line as to not have anything fall on the ratepayer when...
Any questions?
Oh, no. I just wanted to thank you for coming and wanted to just tell you all that stuff, I guess.
Thank you. Counsel Holmes?
Thank you. So you mentioned not wanting to do this every year. What is your expectation? How often do you think this should be revisited?
Without having an exact year on things, I mean, I think it's in the best interest of the city and the department as a whole to constantly have eyes on something, to see, you know, because as we've seen, materials change, these type of things change, and they can change pretty rapidly. So I think it is important to have eyes on it on a yearly basis, but I don't think it's... it's, barring anything major, jumping off the page in the years to come, I think this is something typically, without nailing it down to a date, I think you want to look at things like these every three to five years or in that range. But I think it is important to be aware of the changes that are going on and to monitor.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak against? Do we have anyone to speak neither for nor against? Vice President Dolan, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
I declare this public hearing closed, and Madam Clerk, will you go on to a reading of the third and final public hearing, please?
Absolutely. Public hearing for amendment to Chapter 16, 12.24, Water Emergency. In Section 4, definitions revised: irrigation of lawns versus sprinklers or automatic irrigation systems; to irrigation of lawns, gardens, flowers, and ornamental plants via sprinkles or automatic irrigation systems. In Section 13, penalties, revise the penalties as follows: first violation, $75; second violation, $150; third violation, $250; fourth and subsequent violations, $400.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to speak in favor? It's been a while. How you been?
I wanted to speak in favor of this for a few reasons. We're sticking to the point and staying on topic. I think we need to increase the violations due to more attention being paid to what's going on and having it be a serious, something serious on people's minds. And I think it's counterproductive when somebody is following the water restrictions, residents are following the water restrictions, and maybe their neighbors aren't. And I think at some point, that becomes counterproductive when you're not seeing the enforcement. So, as much as I think the violations need to be go, go up to be taken seriously, I think we also, as a whole, need to look at the enforcement, where the enforcement lies, and I think that's a discussion to be had as well. Because having two violators last year, I think we can see there's more that can be done, but I understand the limitations with the enforcement and how it has previously been done. But I think the violation should be increased, and I do think that we need to look at the enforcement as a whole and how we're going to move forward with that.
Counsel Tavares?
So, I'm probably going to ask the question that a lot of counselors are thinking right now. You mentioned two violations. Is that the extent of the violations that were issued last year?
That is correct.
Yes, okay. So, what you said, in my mind, seems to imply that perhaps more violations could have been issued on the enforcement side? Is that something you can speak to?
Without going into areas beyond what we're going to discuss tonight, I think there needs to be clarity on what determines a violation, as in, do you need to catch an offender in the act? Or is it something that when you show up and there hasn't been rain for days and the driveway's wet, the lawn's wet, is that sufficient? So, I think these are some of the discussions that we can have moving forward as far as violations, and it has been the police that have been enforcing, or that the water department has been calling on to enforce. So, I don't want to take anything away from the police department without getting off topic. We're very thankful for the work that they do, and I'm not sure that this really needs to lie within them, and I think we can look at language and see if maybe we can go another route.
Counsel Lavoie? Thank you, President Delicio. So, you've kind of answered my question, but I guess I'll ask it further. So, the plan would be more so for your department to kind of enforce these fines, because I too was surprised when I went to put in business to remove the fines that were issued during the issue at hand, and to find that only two were issued and that they were only issued by the police department. So, I guess, do you think the department's capable of enforcing the restriction that we put in place, or?
I don't want to speak too much on things where there's a committee involved in this, but looking at this as a whole, without going into too much discussion about it, I would welcome the water department being on board with doing everything they can to address this issue. And I realize what the police, you know, have on their plates, and I don't necessarily... I would welcome the water department being available to help out with this issue, and I think they have enough on their hands, and that's what I'll say to that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak neither for nor against? Vice President Dolan, do you see any reason to keep this public hearing open?
I do not.
I declare that public hearing closed, and I would now entertain a motion to go into committee of the whole.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in committee of the whole. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council on any piece of business facing the city? Please, make your way to the podium.
Just one quick question. When will we have the report? Sorry. Julie Rigby from Attleboro. When will we have the report on the water leak?
So, I'll find out from the mayor exactly what that plan looks like, and then I can report back for sure.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else to address the council on any piece of business facing the city? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to arise from committee of the whole.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now arisen from committee of the whole. We will now go into a reading of the mayor's communication. Madam Clerk?
March 4, 2025. DM Municipal Council. I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of George Bosch, 699 Tiffany Street, to fill an expired term on the licensing board, term to expire February 2031.
Personal Veterans Human Services, please.
For your information, I regret to inform your honorable body, we have received the resignation of Tanya Olivera from the Council on Aging. Please join me in thanking Ms. Olivera for her service to the city.
That's an FYI, and we certainly want to thank Ms. Olivera for her service to the city.
I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the reappointment of Julie Hobson, 404 High Street, North Attleboro, Mass., to the position of Chief Assessor as recommended by the Board of Assessors for a term of three years, term to expire February 2028.
Personal Veterans Human Services, please.
I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the reappointment of Carrie Gray to the Council on Human Rights for a term of three years, term to expire February 2028.
Personal Veterans Human Services, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from City Treasurer Laura Gignac regarding the need for funds to pay the med tax for non-school and non-enterprise employees. A review of the med tax account reveals that additional funding will be required to cover the anticipated expenses for the remainder of fiscal year 2025. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $25,000 from Account 1, Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government Account to Treasurer Med Tax Account.
Finance Committee, please.
It has come to my attention that Monique Scott Meger, who was appointed to the Cultural Council, was not sworn in within the appropriate time. Therefore, I respectfully resubmit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Monique Scott Meger, yeah, 1110 Park Street, to fill an unexpired term on the Cultural Council, term to expire February 2027.
Personal Veterans Human Services and Counsel Angel, you don't need to have Ms. McGag come back.
Sure.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater, Thomas Hayes, regarding the need for funds to fund workers' compensation indemnity for the remainder of fiscal year 25. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $51,000 from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund retained earning account to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund workers' compensation indemnity.
Finance Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater, Thomas Hayes, regarding the need for funds due to the increase in overtime for the remainder of fiscal year 25. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $83,000 from the Wastewater Enterprise Fund retained earning accounts to the following: $60,000 to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund overtime; $13,000 to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund overtime callback DigSafe Markings; $7,500 to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund callback overtime account; and $2,500 to the Wastewater Enterprise Fund main block overtime account.
Public Works Committee, please.
I am very pleased to inform you that the city has been awarded two fiscal year 25 state legislative earmarks. Senator Paul Feeney secured $40,000 in earmark funds for the purpose of downtown beautification. These funds will help us purchase some metal outdoor benches, additional trash containers, planters, and bike racks for installation and use in the downtown area. Representative Adam Scanlon secured $40,000 in earmark funds for the purpose of certain improvements to our city parks. These funds will be used to purchase additional trash containers, outdoor benches and tables, pet waste bag dispensers, and trail markers for Highland Park and other city parks. We are grateful to Senator Feeney and Representative Scanlon for their support of the city's beautification efforts. In accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body approve the expenditure of such funds and also to approve any further grant amendments.
City property claims, please.
At the suggestion of City Auditor Deb Gould and as part of ongoing efforts to improve workflow and internal efficiencies, I have prepared an amendment to Section 5-7.5 of the revised ordinances to increase from $500 to $1,000 the minimum contract amount requiring signatures from the mayor and the city auditor. This change will allow contracts for supplies and services of less than $1,000 to be processed more expeditiously and with reduced staff time. It also allows that the city auditor may exercise their professional judgment in certain situations to impose or waive the signing requirement. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body amend the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro as follows: strike Section 5-7.5 in its entirety and replace with the following.
Ordinances, elections, legislative matters, and Counsel Tavares, would you like to call for a public hearing on April 15?
I would.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Public Works, Michael Tyler, regarding the need for funds associated with the cleanup at their facility which suffered minor flooding. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $5,901 from the Public Works' Salary and Wages Account to the Public Works' Professional Services Account.
Public Works Committee, please.
The City of Attleboro has been notified of its fiscal year 2026 apportionment from the Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid in the amount of $1,899,615.5. Therefore, I respectfully request your honorable body to authorize the expenditure of $1,899,616.5 and other future grant amendments into Fund 3108, Chapter 90 Projects, for the purpose of funding Chapter 90 eligible projects as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Mast dot.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Veteran Service Director Ben Quell regarding the donation of $250 in gift cards to Stop &amp; Shop from Rosemary Burrows. In accordance with Section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro.
City property claims, please.
For your information, I regret to inform your honorable body, we have received the resignation of Thomas Dion from the Licensing Board. Please join me in thanking Mr. Dion for his service to the city.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Dion. That's just an FYI.
I respectfully submit a communication from Council on Aging Director Kelly Lee regarding the receipt of the Shine earmark for fiscal year 25 in the amount of $55,000. In accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to approve the expenditure of such funds and also approve any further grant amendments.
Personal Veterans Human Services, please.
Sincerely, Kathleen DeSimone, Mayor.
Thank you. We will now go into a reading of your communication.
Next communication, March 4, 2025. We have received a new Class II Auto Application from St. John Automotive, Inc., doing business as Better Auto, 473 Washington Street, for 10 customer parking spaces and 21 display spaces.
That'll go to the Licensed Committee and Counsel Lavoie. Would you like to call for a public hearing on April 15?
I would.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have received a new Class II Auto License from DX2 Group LLC, doing business as Wranglers Plus, 1856 County Street, for four customer parking spaces and 20 display spaces.
That'll go to the Licensed Committee and Counsel Lavoie. Would you like to call for a public hearing on April 15?
I would.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have received the certificate of vote from the Planning Board meeting held on March 3, 2025, recommending to the Municipal Council that the loan order in the amount of $50 million for the construction and administration costs associated with a permanent PFAS treatment facility at the Wading River Treatment Plant is consistent with Section 6J Municipal Facilities Goal 16 Policy 2 of the city's comprehensive plan.
So, FYI and copy to all counselors, please.
That concludes the first communication.
Thank you very much. We will now go into committee reports, beginning as always with Counsel Cobus.
Thank you. Reporting for the Finance Committee, from the docket of March 4, 2025, I moved to appropriate $41,242.78 from Account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to Account Treasurer Remediation for city-owned property at 41R Summer Street, Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
Thank you. We covered it in committee last week.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foah?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Second.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero neys.
Appreciate it, Zuma.
Thank you. Sorry. From the docket of March 4, 2025, I move to approve expenditures of no more than $365,000 from Special Education Stabilization Fund 8507 for unexpected special education transportation costs incurred during the current fiscal year.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
Discussed it last week in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero neys.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of March 4, 2025, I move to hold a public hearing on April 1, 2025, relative to the administration's CDVG Program Year 2025 Annual Action Plan, authorization to submit the CDVG Program Year 2025 Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, order before May 15, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
It's just a public hearing.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
to Account School Department Maintenance Building for the purpose of installing automatic doors, door operators at Womps Out of Middle School.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
We discussed it last week.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? From the seat, as a counselor and not the president, I just want to thank the Administration, including the building inspector, for getting this done. I've heard from several residents about the impact this is having on their children, especially those needing a little ADA assistance. So it's moved pretty quickly, and I just wanted to thank everyone involved. That being said, we will have a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. LeVoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabarez?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
And finally, from the docket of March 4th, 2025, I move to approve funds to be appropriated from Certified Free Cash into Fund 2517 Reserve for Compensated Absence and funds to be appropriated from the Certified Retained Earnings for each enterprise fund be made into Reserve for Compensated Absence Fund as follows.
May waive the reading where you read it in committee last week?
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
We talked about this at length last week.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Tabarez.
Mr. Tabarez? Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. LeVoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That concludes the business for the Finance Committee. I call for committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Counsel Foa?
The IT and Infrastructure Committee has no business this evening. I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counsel LeVoy.
Thank you, President Delicio, reporting for the Licensed Committee from the docket of January 7th, 2025. I move to strike the following: A motion to approve the application for a guard dog at 97 Emily Street, LLC, from Zahid Qadir.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
No, I believe we discuss this in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That concludes the business for the Licensed Committee, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time. Thank you very much. Counsel Reynolds?
Thank you, reporting for City Properties Claims Committee from the docket of March 4th, 2025. I move to hold a public hearing on March 18th, 2025, in accordance with Section 2-11.12 of the City Ordinances and declare the 95 Pine Street Richardson School property further identified by the Chief Assessor as map 39, Lot 284, as surplus and available for disposition.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
I have none.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
From the docket of March 4th, 2025, I move to approve the two one-year extensions with CELT integrity for internet access as requested by the School Department.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
We talked about this last week.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
From the docket of March 4th, 2025, I move to accept the donation of 180 stuffed lions and three mounted canvas lion illustrations donated to the zoo from Jared Kenny of Dartmouth Street, Manchester, New Hampshire. The items will be used for a lion love promotion.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
I have none.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
From the docket of March 4th, 2025, I move to declare the following health department equipment as surplus and available for disposition: laser jet Enterprise Series color printer. It's in fair condition.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
I have none.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this too is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
From the docket of October 15th, 2024, I entertain a motion to strike the following resolution regarding Highland.
Second.
You may waive the reading?
Second.
Second, Vice President. Okay, Counsel Reynolds. Any comments?
Any comments? No, I have no further comments.
Okay. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
That was the last one, right? Some of my pages are...
Did you show?
Yeah.
That is the next one, yeah.
Okay, I see. Okay. Thank you. That is all the business City Properties Claims has this evening, but I would like to call a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Vice President Dolan.
Thank you, reporting for Public Works Committee from the docket of March 4th, 2025, I move to appropriate $2,315 from Account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to Fund 2334 to cover unreimbursed expenditures related to the zoo grant fund.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. LeVoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tabarez? President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of March 4th, 2025, I move to transfer $11,757.50 from Account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to Account Public Works Crosswalk Systems for a new solar-powered crosswalk system to be installed at the intersection of North Main Street and Elizabeth Street.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
No, we discussed in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Tabarez.
Mr. Tabarez?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. LeVoy?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
President Delicio?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. That's all the business for Public Works Committee. I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Counsel Holmes.
Thank you, reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee from the docket of March 4th, 2025, I move to appropriate $150,000 from Account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to Account Fire Overtime in order to maintain services for the remainder of fiscal year 25.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. Any comments?
We discussed in committee.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Cobus, please.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foa?
Yes.
Mr. LeVoy?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice President Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?